All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Hi, everyone, welcome. This is a special meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. It is Monday, March 12th, at 6:37 PM, and we are at the Greenfield High School cafeteria at 21 Barr Avenue. Secretary Alexander, could we have a roll call, please?
Committee Member Hollins. Committee Member Karen.
Here.
Committee Member Ekstrom, absent. Committee Member Ward.
Here.
Committee Member Nunez.
Here.
Let the record show that myself, Mayor Martin, and the Superintendent are present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum this evening. Before we get started, our main agenda item to this evening is to have our final vote and deliberation on the FY19 budget. But before we jump in, we do have an opportunity for public comment and also a little space for reports, if necessary. So now we will move on to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment this evening? Okay, please come to the table, press the button that says "Push", and if you could just identify yourself and your address, please, for the record, thank you. If you press "Push", the button at the bottom. It's actually like that panel. There we go.
Hello. Apologies. My name is Andrew Vernon, 17 Sunset Square, Greenfield. I apologize not to distract from the purpose of the meeting. I was here two weeks ago to make public comment about effective and timely communication for the weapon incident transpiring in late February. I'm here to talk along the same lines about effective and timely communication. Two weeks ago during this very meeting, there was discussion about the planned March 14th, air quotes, "walkout", which is or is not planned for this Wednesday, again, March 14th. And I guess I personally, as an individual and as a parent, am confused and concerned by the Wednesday, March 14th supposed walkout. In front of me, I have a communication dated March 9th, last Friday, that I received today at 6:00 PM out of my daughter's school bag about a walkout slated to happen about 39 hours from now at my 10-year-old daughter's middle school. The communication does not articulate to me if it is condoned or supported by the school. It does provide direction to administrators, specifically teachers at the school, of their responsibilities. It does also mention that children do have the option of participating or not. As a parent, as a reader of this document, it is not clear to me the purpose of these 17 minutes, or what will or will not be done during those 17 minutes. After my daughter finished taekwondo at the Big Y Plaza earlier at 6:00 PM before coming here, I asked her about this. She told me that Wednesday, March 14th, is for her to have a discussion with her class about what type of assault rifles are not allowed in schools. So it is now my job tonight to have that discussion with her about what I believe is our school district's plan for the event, is this document calls it, for Wednesday, March 14th at 10:00 AM. So the timely part of my comment relates to the fact that it is Monday, March 12th. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March 13th, there is no school. This would allot me two hours on Wednesday, March 14th, to pick up a phone, to have a discussion with any member of the school district, although my daughter would already be at school, having leaving leaving Coal Rain Road at 7:04 AM on Bus 1. So I, as a parent, am not afforded an opportunity in this conversation to talk about it. And I would like to be afforded that opportunity with any or all members of the school district, administrators and school committee members alike. I am adamant about it, because the next 36 hours are going to be difficult for me personally, as I thought that I would be equipped to understand what is going to happen during these 17 minutes on Wednesday. And that has consistently not been made clear to me what will happen on Wednesday, March 14th. I also understand that I am not allowed, as a member of the public, on the property on that day. So would appreciate-
About 20 seconds.
Would appreciate some feedback on that. Again, it was discussed here two weeks ago. And this is not a effective or timely communication, only because only now am I allowed to initiate a communication and a two-way conversation about this, finally, 6:00 PM, Monday, March 12th. 36 hours, two business hours, before this walkout is to transpire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vernon. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment at this time and move on to any reports. I left this here, I left this open for any subcommittee reports. I know that there is some reporting out that will be coming from the Budget Subcommittee, and I believe that our other subcommittees will actually- there's not a need to report out this evening, but will be reporting out on Wednesday at our regular meeting. Member Ward, yes?
Before we go any further, do we want to address, maybe, what's going to be what we have in line for Wednesday?
Yes, so I was just going to ask you, Member Ward, to just hold any recommendations or comments related to the budget until we get to that as an agenda item. Our first agenda item is actually an update on safety planning and scheduled district-wide events, for the purpose of discussing March 14th and any other information that the Superintendent would like to provide at this time. I will just quickly say at my, you know- well, I'll actually hold, I have some comments related to agenda requests and overall school committee calendar, and I'll hold those comments until we get to that item. So let's jump right in to our update on safety planning and scheduled district-wide events. Superintendent?
Good evening. I'd like to begin by talking about some of our district-wide events. They have nothing, nothing, to do with the walkout this Wednesday. This Wednesday, we have three district-wide events which this committee has talked about in the past. The first is at the elementary level, we're hosting a Day of Kindness. Each school is tailoring this to their school and community needs. All of our principals are here tonight. Four Corners School, for one example, is collecting rocks and painting them, and dedicating those rocks to an act of kindness that they are doing to make the school a better place. At Federal Street School, they're engaging in song, they're starting their day with song, and they're engaging in ways that, as a community, they can celebrate kindness. These are events that are designed to promote the culture of our district and our schools. At the middle school level, they're engaging in acts of service and kindness. I will reiterate, here and many places, there is nowhere in our literature, in our brochures, or anywhere else, that we have made this a day to talk about assault rifles. At the high school, we are engaging in a Day of Dialogue around the topic of school safety. These are published brochures that are on our website. There's been advanced communication to the principals and to all staff. And today, a letter went home to parents, in addition, not about our district events, but specifically to respond to a national student-initiated effort around a school walkout. As the school district, we cannot, do not, and will not endorse or support any organized political activity of any particular approach. That's not our place as a public school district. And Mr. Vernon quoted from a letter that went home today, and I would like to share with you one, the first sentence, which is, "This letter is to provide advanced clarification about the Greenfield Public Schools' plans in response to student-initiated efforts for a walkout on Wednesday, March 14th, if they take place." The reason why it's unknown is because these are student-initiated plans, not school plans. There is a question, is the Greenfield Public Schools organizing the walkout? The answer, as written in that letter, is no. We want to be clear that the Greenfield Public Schools is not organizing this event in any way, nor are students expected nor encouraged to participate. However, the Greenfield Public Schools supports students' constitutional rights to freedom of expression and peaceful assembly. Our goal for this week is to provide a safe and developmentally appropriate space for our students to continue to learn. That is our objective, that's what we do. We have to keep students safe, and we have to be able to educate them. We recognize that this is a difficult and divisive time in our country, as people feel differently about many issues. And as schools, our job is to provide a safe place for students to come to their own opinions, to research and think about difficult questions, and to, with their families, come to decisions that are appropriate for them, with their families, and we provide a safe place for students to express their views. So if there are further questions, we really welcome those conversations. Certainly, we could not anticipate the weather, and we would all love to be in school tomorrow and not having a snow day. Having said that, we're glad to provide advanced and timely notification of that weather event. Regarding school safety, the more important update that I'd like to provide the community tonight is the fact that there is ongoing work regarding updating, reviewing, and improving our safety protocols. The Health and Safety Subcommittee has begun their work of meeting and reviewing these topics, and I appreciate the work of that Subcommittee. There are advanced preparedness planning meetings between the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, myself, and with participation from the town, and a number of other efforts underway, and these are the really important work. It's not all about what happens immediately in front of the camera, it's about long-term and sustained plans to keep our students safe, and the fact that over the last several years, with the support of the town, we've made significant investments in the school's safety here in this building and on others. So I'm proud to say in front of you tonight that we've made a number of proactive efforts. I'd like to thank my administrative team. They've all been working at their school levels to review our safety protocols and to bring forward suggestions, and that work is continuing. And I expect to continue to update this committee, but I wanted to bring that brief update tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments to the Superintendent? Member Hollins?
Just a clarification. If there is a student walkout on the 14th as part of the national movement, is it the high school, not at the middle school, or it's both high school and middle school?
We've received primarily interest at the high school. I'm aware of a few students that have expressed interest at the middle school level. So we do have plans prepared if there is a walkout at the middle school or high school level. At this time, we have no interest from the elementary level. But primarily, we've received a lot of interest at the high school. Communication was sent to all high school and middle school parents in the event, so they could be prepared. It's not something we're encouraging, we just want to make sure that parents have that conversation. We believe it's the families' place to have that conversation and not the schools.
Mayor Martin?
Superintendent, there was mention of no involvement, but I think there has been involvement. We've offered some safe areas to march to. So is that totally outside the Superintendent's office, or is that within the Superintendent's office?
It's important that we, we cannot give up our role as responsible for student safety during this event or any other event. So if a student were to run out of the school building and into traffic, as an example, we would make reasonable efforts to keep that student safe. In this situation, we are aware that there are some students who may wish to participate, and a reasonable way to do that is to designate an area in which we can provide some supervision. We're not interfering with their rights to express their opinion, nor are we giving them additional amplification of that opinion. But we're just saying, designating, this is a safe area. If they're outside of that area, then they would be, or could face discipline, subject to the code of conduct, like a student if they were skipping school.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we have had involvement in preparation for this student-led walkout. And I've, though I haven't been, I just received a notice myself today, it may have been sent Friday, but I received it today. We have a, we have a safety plan, which includes, say, the building was on fire, or there was water damage, or other issues. We have designated areas where all the students are supposed to go, so we can maintain account. Has those areas been, are those areas going to be utilized, or have we determined other areas?
In consultation with the Chief of Police, we've been requested not to publicly disclose locations that students may or may not be gathering for student safety.
And since this is during a regular school day, there's teacher plans and curriculum to follow. Have we modified our curriculum? First question, have we modified our curriculum for this event? And two, have all the teachers been notified that they are, they have limits as to their involvement? And they also have to stay within the classroom for students who are not participating?
I think there are three questions, let me see if I can get them all. Has curriculum been modified? So we always use current events and teachable moments to teach to our curriculum. It's how best to reach students. So I should hope that curriculum is modified in ways that are appropriate, but not in ways that take the teacher's position too far. So are we using the opportunity for some students expressing their opinion as a way to talk about how to effectively express your opinion in writing and verbally? Yes. Are we asking teachers to take a position? No. Teachers have clearly been told that their job is to provide safe place, provide tools for students to form their own argument, but that this is not about teachers putting their particular views onto students. They've been told that very clearly, and that they are not to take a political position, or encourage or discourage. They've been specifically asked to continue their, their teaching throughout this 17-minute, which is a brief period of time where students, if they choose to walk out. Teachers have been taught, told to continue teaching. The only exception to that is if an entire class of students were to go outside, teachers have also been told they're responsible for supervising. So I would expect that teacher in that case, if it should happen, and we don't know how many students will participate, could be very few, or it could be very large. If all the, if all the children in the class were to leave, that teacher should then supervise where they are, not to participate, or to pick up a bullhorn, but to supervise, make sure the students are safe. There was a question earlier, too. Because we're not organizing this event, there was no detail in that letter or in other communications about the purpose of this event, because we're not organizing it. And so it's not our place to do that. But it is my understanding that the reason that there are 17 minutes in this is in honor of the 17 victims of the school shooting. So it's, that's my understanding of the stated purpose. And it, again, is a student-initiated effort, so it could well be that there are other goals or other aspects to it. And again, the school is not organizing, but students may do so.
And just one final question. In reference to Mr. Vernon's reference to assault rifles that his daughter apparently thought was the discussion, how, have you heard of that from any other parent?
No.
How might that have occurred, do you think?
It would be my guesstimate at best. I will say that middle school students relaying messages is not our best form of communication and sure-fire communication home, which is why we try to put communication in writing to parents as often as possible. We are upgrading our communication system so that a message that was ready on Friday could go out by email on Friday, and we're looking forward to being able to increase that. But we've taken a lot of proactive communication measures, and we're really, there've been more communications, not less, since the last time we had public comment, and we're continuing to encourage that community dialogue.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from committee members? Okay, I have a couple, just myself as an individual, not speaking for the group, of course. I'm hearing a couple of different, I guess, I'm curious, can you give us an example, Superintendent, of, you know, what if, what if there's just a handful of kids that want to leave the classroom? How can a teacher, is there support for our teachers in order to have ongoing teaching in the classroom while simultaneously engaging with students that are not, you know, supervising students that may be leaving the classroom? How could that work if there was like a split in the classroom?
At both the middle school and high school level, where we're expecting there may be some students, and again, this could be a very small number of students, but we're trying to plan and ensure that students are safe, even if it's three. So we have administrators at both buildings, we have a principal, we have two associate principals at both buildings. Without getting into the minutia, there are teachers, and there are other people in the building, and other support staff. And we are making reasonable efforts to make sure that wherever a child is, that they're supervised. And that teaching continue to the greatest extent possible. So if a teacher can stay in the classroom and continue teaching, that's what they should do.
Thank you. I'll just say that I also, I mean, I, I understand our position to be apolitical in this, and that this is a very sensitive issue. But I think that the, what has been planned for March 14th, and the work that's been done on the district side, I am proud of that work. I think that it's important to create a safe opportunity for our students to be able to express themselves and to engage into a dialogue about this kind of civic engagement. So I am glad to know that that is happening. I also, you know, am hearing some input about our communication process yet again, and so I, that's a separate thing than the events of March 14th. But I definitely want the committee to have the opportunity to deliberate on district communication or building communication. I think that the best thing at this time would be to refer that potentially to the Policy Subcommittee to review communication policy for the district, and see how that fits into the, you know, the overall schedule for the Policy Subcommittee, so that it's not overlooked. And then at that time, we can hear more about upgrading the communication system and procedures that are in place right now, related to building communication versus district communication. I'm also really sensitive to the fact that we're living in this really intense communication age, where a lot of information can spread really quickly. And so I want, I appreciate us trying to stay ahead of that and ensuring that families are getting plenty of communication. Member Hollins?
I just want to mention, for anyone interested, we actually have a policy, JMB, that governs this, called Teaching About Controversial Issues, that talks about what our policy is when there's an issue where there are different points of view, and how teachers should plan the discussions, and how students initiate forums. Anyway, we have a policy called Teaching About Controversial Issues, and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the FY19 budget deliberation and vote. I'd like to start off, I believe with the Superintendent, and Mark from TMS is here also to speak to the budget. You, we just received this evening this updated draft of the budget that incorporates the recommendation of the Subcommittee, and also corrects, I think, a couple of errors that were in the initial copy that we received on 216. My recommendation is that we start with a review of any changes from the 216 document, and then we can hear from Member Ward as to the Budget Subcommittee recommendation, and go from there. Superintendent, did you want to start, or Mark, I'm not sure who's best to start reviewing any changes that have been made from the 216 document?
So I actually might recommend that the Budget and Finance Subcommittee makes a report next. And the reason why is the document that's in front of you tonight is not an updated, revised Superintendent's budget. It's an attempt to meet the recommendations of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee from last Friday. So the reason you just received it is because there was a meeting on Friday, that was an additional meeting for additional time for deliberation, and then this document is an update, and it is an attempt to match what the Budget and Finance Subcommittee is putting forward as a recommendation, which is slightly higher than the Superintendent's budget in terms of the bottom-line dollar, but there was some key deliberation and reasons why.
That sounds fine. Member Ward, are you prepared to discuss recommendations from the Budget Subcommittee?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the Budget Subcommittee has met numerous times over the last, over the last month to work with what is considered, I guess, the Superintendent's budget, which was published in the newspaper. And that's the February 16th document that you're referring to, correct? Yes. So for the most part, that budget, which totaled in around, was it 18, 8? 18,800,000? 18,883,000 and change, was something that we were very, we were very comfortable with, very confident in. We felt very good about that, considering last year's budget was at around 18,2. Given the step increases that are mandatory for teachers, that are another year wiser and more experienced, and the special education increases, my understanding is that that 18,883 was an increase of about 3%, which, am I right, Superintendent?
3.86.
3.86%. Which we felt very good about. We checked that budget over back several times to make sure that all line items matched up, and that things were covered, all of our bases and so forth, and that they, because there was some, there was a little bit of confusion, I think, between the budget last year, which came from a business manager that we had internally, and then we now have a different system for budgeting, or not budgeting, but business management. And we're maybe using a different program or software, and it displays things a little bit differently. So trying to make sure that all, all our apples were where they were supposed to be and counted for did take some time. What we came up with, there were a few points that, that we did as a Subcommittee side that, that might be in the district's best interest to, to change in the Superintendent's budget, one of which was, there was a $40,000 budget line item for textbooks that had been cut back to $10,000. We agreed to reinstate some money there, up to $30,000 for textbooks. So we added $20,000. So we added $20,000 to the superintendent's budget for textbooks. We also added, there was nothing there for human resources in the school department, and we've worked, we have done some work, I know, as a, as a committee to look at the possibility of joining forces, the human resources level with the town as a way to streamline services. We haven't reached that agreement as of yet. So it concerned the subcommittee to some degree that there was nothing in that line item for human, human resources. We have agreed, not for position, so to speak, but for, to allow for some human resources services, we've added $60,000 to that line item. There was also an increase, those were a couple of points where we added money to the superintendent's budget. We actually cut her budget a bit with the Academy of Early Learning Principal, which she had, and it's a tough call, because while I think that probably a full-time administrator there or principal, there's, there's very good, very good reason to have somebody there full-time. At this point, we thought that it might be best if we, if we kept the position at part time, which would cut about $39,000 out of that budget. Over the next several months and the next year, we could, we could discuss more about how to assist or, you know, increase the, the level of administration there for, to assist with what is a growing part of our, our education system. Those are the three major points. As I said, the first two would add money to the budget, the second would take it away, but it does bounce, it does kick that budget up over the 19 million mark, which was something that, it's, you know, it's, it's a very difficult game. We have, and it's not a game, it's, it's a very difficult task. We have a wonderful community to think of and thousands of taxpayers, and I'm one of them, and we have a large number of children that we want to provide the best education for. So we're doing our best for all of those folks, in our opinion, and I'm comfortable with this budget. I was comfortable with the superintendent's budget. Quite honestly, I'd be more, I'd be comfortable adding more services to this budget, but I'm in a different financial position than I think many of our taxpayers are, and I, and I've been told so. Stop spending the money. Well, there's a lot of teachers that would, that would rather have us spend a little bit more money, and I can, I can understand that, too. So, as I said, over the past several weeks, meeting several times for multiple hours at a time, we've, I feel very confident that we have, we have a good product to put forward in, in either the 18, eight, eight-three that the superintendent proposed, or the, the hair over 19 million that we, as a subcommittee, have agreed to, to present here to the, to the full committee. So with that being said, I, I think that the February 16th document that went to the paper is not the same document that we have here today. This document probably includes what the subcommittee has changed. So with that said, that's, that's what we're presenting to you here today. Business manager and superintendent can probably speak on each line item if you have any questions, but we've looked, we've looked it over very, very thoroughly. I feel confident of that, because I've got a great, we've got a great subcommittee here. Adrian, the chair has put together a great group of people. Susan Hollins is fantastic, and the mayor is also very smart and has the community and the talent best interest in mind. And between the three of us and other committee members as well who have participated in those meetings, we've come up with something that I'm proud of, and that's what you have here today. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Ward. Are there any other members of the subcommittee that want to weigh in at this time related to any recommendations? I'm seeing none. Okay. Any comments from the superintendent or Mark? Did you want to go through the documents that you brought forward?
Sure. Yep, I can, the changes are, as Cam had mentioned, with the addition of also there was money added for sick leave buyout in case we have any retiring teachers and, you know, they have significant amounts of money in the, in their sick bank that they would want to use as a buyout in their retirement. So that was budgeted for as well. So that in total were the changes that were made since the Friday meeting to this budget that you have in front of you. Prior, all those other, all the other elements that we've talked about in the prior committee meetings are, are in this budget. So I guess in terms of the budget, I mean, just our processes generally to go through, you know, we've met with each of the departments, we've gotten their needs, which we've pulled forward into this budget. It's been discussed, obviously, for, you know, quite a period of time. One of the things that is significant about this budget, even though it has increases, is we're also planning for some decreases in grant funding. So that's been reduced, and that's had to been picked up by the local budget, because it's a zero-sum game when it comes to the total pool of money that funds the Enfield Public Schools. So we've made that adjustment as well, and we're also looking to support the budget more using the school choice funds than we have in prior years to present a budget that's balanced and affordable. And other than that, I mean, we could talk about specific items in it, but for the most part, we've rolled through, you know, any salary changes, the contractual increases that are required for the different bargaining units are contemplated in this budget, which also obviously creates a, you know, an increase from one year to the next, because these are built in and, you know, 70% of the budget is salary. So this is something that you experience every time you have a budget change from one year to the other.
Thank you, Mark. In order to open up deliberation, I think we should put a motion on the table, and then we can dive in. Member Hollins, did you have a clarifying question?
Well, you had asked if the changes in the budget would be pointed out, and I'd like to ask that they be pointed out in the document, because they weren't, and I've looked through, I don't see them, and I would like...
Great.
If, for example, so that, I don't think that's, I'm just asking that what you asked be brought to our attention. What were the changes? What page? There's a few I don't see, like, I don't see the school committee stipends for 13,000.
Thanks, Member Hollins. No, we can clarify.
There's three things I don't see, but I would like to see what the changes, what pages they were on.
Okay. My colleague made the changes, so it may take me a little bit to find them, or I may have to text him to see where he put it. This is a very large budget, but I know that they're in there.
Well, the last page has school committee. Trying to look at the new one. So there was 13,000 to be added to the school committee cost center, I thought.
My recollection of that discussion was it was in the line, he was just pulling it out so that you could see it. If it's helpful, I can go through the changes.
It might have been in the secretary.
I was at the meeting, Mark was not. I can go through the changes that were recommended by the subcommittee, maybe Mark can tell us what page they're on, or it might make sense to give Mark a little bit of time and then come back to this item so that the committee's not waiting. But just to summarize the changes that were requested by the budget and finance subcommittee, would that be helpful, or are you waiting for the page numbers?
I know what the changes were, they're requested. I'm trying to see where they were, like, the 60,000 for HR, or the 8,000 for the physician.
I suggest continuing deliberation in when he has those page numbers. I can't, my pages are different slightly than this, so it'll take him a moment.
I will clarify about the school committee member stipends. My understanding is that it is incorporated into the school committee secretary line and that there was a change to reflect the total, the total plus the stipend that we pay to our school committee secretary, but you raise a good question as to whether that should be its own separate line item.
I think there were two line, new line items we agreed to add. One, I think, was this one, and one for the school physician. But I, I also agree that should be a vote with the school committee to change the document. I looked at the nursing column, which is where I thought we were putting the physician.
Do you want to move on, or? Okay. Let's give Mark one minute to find the physician stipend, and are there any other...
The HR.
And the HR.
Thank you.
Yep. Great, thanks, Mark. Mayor Martin?
That's why we have a lull in the action here. Under Business Administration Office, we were informed that there was 122,000 in there for a business manager, and I'd like to know the status of the application, interview, and hiring process. That's a school committee job. And then subset question, what, if we don't hire anyone, is the, are the funds available for continued relationship with this firm? Anybody?
The status of the position, it is open, it is posted, and it has not yet been filled. We have had, two candidates have come through for interviews. Of them, only one was available immediately, and that individual had not had any experience as a school business manager, and their licensure was still pending. So no certified candidates that were available to begin immediately came forward. In conversation with the chair, I did not believe it was fruitful for the school committee to interview until we had a qualified candidate pool that I could confidently recommend somebody to begin at the committee's chosen date. So we have, we do have individuals that are interested and have applied, and I would encourage others that are watching at home to continue their application if they're, have the skill set that we're looking for, but we don't have somebody ready to come forward for an interview to the school committee, and we're grateful that we have an interim business management service that is, has seen us through the budget process and began and is now finishing our budget development for FY19.
Could you let me know where we're advertising for the business manager?
Member Hollins?
On, on this topic, if, we have an amount in the budget, but it doesn't mean we would have to pay someone that amount, would it? So that if someone came along that wasn't experienced, it might be a different amount with a mentor or something like that. This is just the budget, it's not an obligation to pay a future candidate that amount necessarily, right?
That's my understanding. Superintendent?
Thank you.
How are things, Mark?
To tell you about the $8,000 for the school physician is on the third page under nursing services, and, let's go to it here. Towards the bottom, it's the line listed as GR nursing services, because there's not a nurse for that building, and it's there currently as a placeholder, because we will have to build a budget line for a physician. We don't have the physician's line in the budget, so it's the placeholder for the $8,000 until we create a budget line for it.
Thank you, I see that now.
Could you explain a little bit about what you mean when you say creating a budget line?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, sometimes there's not always a budget line that's existing in your, your budget for an item that you want to use, so we have to set up a code that ties into the DESI function codes that we report to the state and create the proper budget line. But for budgeting purposes, you know, we'll have a placeholder in this Excel document, but when it comes time to actually vote, approve, and enter the budget into the accounting software, Munis, we may have to create additional lines to fund some of the items that the committee as a whole has agreed, you know, are going to be funded as part of the FY19 budget.
Thank you. Number Ward?
Yes, I think, I think I might have said that the difference between the superintendent's budget and our budget being 18, eight, and eighty-three, and last year's budget 18, two, we discussed that as being a 3.5% increase, correct? But we didn't have, that 18, eight, three where we started at with your budget, we didn't have, we got there after step increases, after special education costs that we have, those are, we didn't have choices there. So the amount of increase that we had in this budget that we actually had control over is what? Very little.
And I think Member Ward is referring back to our contractual obligations plus transportation, which I believe comes to approximately $388,000. That was presented in the superintendent's budget presentation at our last meeting, and so that's what Member Ward is referring to, that we are obligated to just under $400,000, just to keep things the same if we move into next year.
Also, as a note, the comparison there is between this year's school committee budget, which is around that 18, nine, and presently at 19 even, and to last year's mayor's budget, which was 18, two. So that difference was less if compared to last year's school committee budget. So those two numbers, we might see that the mayor's budget this year differs from the school committee budget this year, but this year's school committee budget, as it stands now, is just around a 1% increase over last year's school committee budget. So a very, very small increase, which, that 1% increase is less than our contractual obligations and our fixed cost increases, which means that basically we've absorbed more costs in this, this year's budget as proposed than in previous years. I would like to pass out, this is not new information, this is the same information, but it's presented differently. There was a conversation on Friday about the use of school choice, and so I'm going to send this around. This is just a graph that looks, and some of this numbers relates to previous fiscal years, so it's based on information that's available to me, although not all of these budgets are ones that I've personally been involved with. So it looks at the use of local funds and school choice over the last several years. And this first graph that's coming around talks about how much school choice money came in, and then how much of our budget relied on school choice funds. So the blue bar is school choice money coming in. If there's an extra for the audience, it'd be great if they could have one or two floating. The blue bar is just how much school choice money there's coming in, and the orange bar is how much school choice money we're spending. And what you can see from this is, we're spending more school choice money than we're taking in, because we're trying to lessen the burden on the local tax dollar, but this type of, this is why when we have conversations about, well, can you just add another position from choice? The answer is no. We've actually utilized all of our available funds from choice and then dipped a little farther still. So at this point in time, if there were significant reductions to the budget in front of the committee tonight, we wouldn't simply be able to just absorb them from choice. It's no longer an option that is available to us, that is a sustainable option. So we've used all the school choice funds that we believe are prudent to do so, and while managing a budget that we feel can continue for several years and put the district in good financial footing, if we were to use any more school choice funds than this, it would not be sustainable. I'm going to send around a second graph, again, same information, just a different way of saying it, and this is, this talks about what the projection in the school choice balance would be at the end of each budget cycle, and again, this goes back several years, and it's just for comparison to see that the ending balance that's projected at the end of each year does not continue to climb. So we're not continuing to build a reserve in school choice that just goes away for a rainy day. We're continuing to utilize school choice funds when times are tough, but we still very much need a key position, or a classroom teacher, or a psychologist. This is that little bit of flexibility, and... This is that little bit of flexibility, and it, it will, over time, dissipate unless we are able to bring these into the general fund and to rely on our operating budget to sustain the positions that the principals, the department heads, the people services director are telling us that we need to meet our increased enrollment and our changing student population needs and state mandates. And that's really what we're looking at when we talk about new positions, more students, more services, more mandates.
Member Hollins.
I believe our, our budget document is a policy document, that's what everyone says, so I would like to make a motion to add the two lines, because I personally don't think it should be informally added to and subtracted from. Is that all right? So I'd like to just formally make a motion that we add two lines to the budget document, one for school committee stipends and the school committee cost center, and one for school physician services in the nursing cost center.
Is there a second? Second from Member Karen. Is there any deliberation on this? Okay, all those in favor of adding, officially adding a line for school committee stipends and physician, school physician services? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Mark, did you find some other information for us?
I did.
Thank you.
On page eight of 31, it says eight thirty-one, but it's eight of 31 pages. If you go to the very bottom of that line is a sick leave buyback for $55,000 out of the local budget. And then two pages further, which ends the summary of the overall budget and gives the detail for personnel. If you see about three quarters of the way or two thirds of the way down that first page, page 10 of 31, HR Personnel Assistant to the Superintendent Personnel for $60,000 was added to the budget.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on page, you said eight thirty-one?
Yes.
Can we identify the cost center where that's located?
On that page, the cost center, it says HR Personnel, it's under Business Office.
I see it in the staffing. I'm just trying to find it in the budget.
Okay. I will find it.
Thank you.
On page five thirty-one, top quarter of the page, it says Administration Superintendent, and then underneath it, it says Personnel Assistant, and the line item is reflected there. Everything that's in Personnel behind is the detail, and it feeds into the top sheet, which is the budget. I'm still not seeing it. You said five.
Okay. One second, Member Hollins. This may be a line that we also should be moving to change. My recollection of the deliberation on this particular line item was that we did not necessarily want to restrict ourselves to hiring one individual into this position, but instead allow for the opportunity to potentially contract out services or find some other configuration. There was a real understanding that having one individual was not necessarily the solution. So I would entertain a motion for us to modify the, or create a new line for Human Resources Services. I believe that that was the recommendation from the subcommittee.
I make a motion that the line item be titled HR Services.
Okay, any deliberation on that? Okay, all those in favor is a, I just need to clarify, actually, would you like to change this, create a new line item for HR Services?
I think the...
It may be that we need to?
It may, it may need to be if it ends up not being a person, because it would be a different code number of its consultant services, but at least the text
Okay.
Isn't a Personnel Assistant. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to either change this line item to Human Resources Services or create a new one to be funded at the same amount? Okay. Okay, any further deliberation on this? All those in favor? Aye. Mayor Martin?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Yes. Mayor Martin?
Yes, the, under Personnel and in the budget, what is the number of vacant positions that are funded? So we just had one.
Are you looking for vacant positions in the FY18 budget or new positions in the FY19 budget? Or both?
I guess one would depend upon the other. So FY19 is funded, if it's funding vacant positions that exist now, then it would be funding a vacant position in the FY19 budget. But if there are any new positions or any other positions that are created in the FY19 budget, then that would add to the total of funding a vacant position.
But for example, the position just created wasn't vacant this, I mean, it was vacant, but it also wasn't budgeted this year. It wasn't in this year's budget, but now the Budget and Finance Subcommittee has recommended to add it.
Right, but that's still a new position.
Correct. Or stipend.
Vacant this year, vacant in FY18 or 19, and funded in the FY19 budget.
So new positions.
Vacant. So you have pair of professionals that are not, there is no person identified in the personnel list of number of positions. So what, how many of those positions are, you cannot put a name to or a social security number.
So there are 12 vacant positions, and there are five new positions.
Across all categories?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, Mayor Martin?
Yes. Want me to, I just?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
On, on March 5th, Chris stated that the circuit breaker amount on June 30th of 2019 would be $845,000, and the, I'm sorry, would be over a million dollars, and the choice in account would be $845,000. So do you have, is, is that still the same situation as Chris had stated?
On the 5th? I mean, we haven't finished out the year yet in terms of where funds need to be applied, so that's, it's a moving target, but that's the projection towards the end of the year.
But, but in fact, when we do the offset to the original budget and we adjust the, each line item, we're, we've already encumbered parts of those funds in each category, choice and circuit.
Yes, that's true.
There, do the numbers include the, the increase? So we had a circuit breaker increase that started in January, I believe it was, went to $221,555 every 90 days. So that, that includes the $221,000?
The projection, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have more questions?
Just one more question, and then I'll free some time up. It's, I, I don't know if it's a regulation or a law, but it's customary that we should follow that any collective bargaining agreement that is settled, that the town council funds the first year, because that has a budget impact for future years. So any type of agreed collective bargaining agreement that's funded internally by the school department, the first year commits the town to year two and three. Have you, have you planned that, or has the administration planned to bring these signed and agreed-upon collective bargaining agreements to the town council? So nothing's been funded the first year as of yet?
Not, no, not as yet.
And then the set aside monies in, for negotiated salaries, or, do we still have that line item? For future negotiations and negotiated salaries is specifically for that, after a town council approval of a collective bargaining agreement?
Is that a question?
I just, I'm looking for some support on that.
My understanding of the line item that was associated with, with negotiated salary adjustments is that, that is actually specific to those with individual contracts and not our collective bargaining unit contracts. Is that a correct understanding of that line? And I believe that it's been reduced. I'm looking at it right now. That is on nine thirty-one, and I'm seeing it reduced from the FY19 budget. It's the second line at the top of the page on nine thirty-one.
That would seem so for salary.
Do you have any further questions right now, Mayor?
Not now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members? Member Hollins?
I have a question about our ability, once we vote, a bottom line to talk about the details within the budget.
Sure, thanks, Member Hollins. So we are voting the bottom line number this evening, and just to clarify, the, the budget will then go to the mayor, who, of course, the mayor has been involved in this process all along as a member of the school committee and just as the mayor. And so it will go to the mayor, he will make any recommended adjustments, and that will then go to the council. And once the council votes its final vote, there will be some adjustments, there will likely be adjustments that the district will need to make. And at that time, we will have a chance to revote an amended budget. And so that, I just want to make sure that that's clear to folks, that we will have an opportunity to weigh in again after, if any changes are made to the bottom line budget through the process of going through the mayor and the council. I don't have any dates yet for when the council will be deliberating on the overall citywide budget, but I will be sure to bring those forward for the committee. I know that a couple of committee members have asked about that, and I will be sure to communicate that with everyone. Does that, is that helpful, Member Hollins?
I appreciate the clarification that we may vote again on the budget. There's just some items within the budget that there wasn't enough time to really talk about. I'm not complaining or even saying I don't agree. I'm just wondering if we can continue to look at some of the cost centers and understand in more depth if we choose to do that. You just, that makes sense, like, like, transportation. The Budget Committee Subcommittee Chairman said, you know, we, we definitely trust the numbers we have. Just curious about transportation, to talk about it more, things like that. Can we still do that?
Thanks, Member Hollins. I, the, the committee did request at one point a transportation report. My understanding is that that report is available, and we need to schedule that report. This was something that I actually wanted to bring up at our third agenda item, which would be talking about requests for agenda items. So in terms of ongoing dialogue about transportation, I think that this, we've all signed up for that as school committee members. My understanding is that we're in our last year of the transportation contract. Okay, Superintendent just clarified, we had a five-year contract for transportation that started prior to her coming on board, so I believe that we have a year and a half left in that contract, but we'll double-check that. So yes, there is opportunity for ongoing conversation about transportation, and I did also want to clarify that any transfers from different cost centers, that's our job to oversee that. So if the superintendent wants to make any adjustments to any of the items, she should bring them forward to us for a vote at the time. That's my understanding of the process and our obligation and our oversight responsibility to the school district budget. The other thing that I do recommend, and I have spoken with Member Ward as chairperson of the Budget Subcommittee, is that the Budget Subcommittee review this process and continue to focus on improving our budget process and overall deliberation and dive deeper into our understanding of the budget process. And I believe that there is support for that to happen at the Subcommittee level. Are there, Member Hollins?
I'd like to make a comment about the budget.
Absolutely.
I was looking over our policies on curriculum, and one of the topics that came up while we were reviewing the budget and Subcommittee were, were the amount that we budget for each school to have curriculum materials and texts, something that we changed. And I was going back over our policies because, and I just want to point out that we have a policy on curriculum and materials, and there've been a lot of people in our positions before us, and it says, "Materials appropriate to the needs of the school program must be available to each student and teacher." And I think it's important just to note for the public or anyone deciding the budget that in our recent report that I shared with the school committee, that the, there's an average of how the average cost per student is figured, is summarized in Massachusetts. And the amount of discretionary money, once we get the teacher, you know, we're mostly, our budget is Personnel, Contracts, Transportation, Nursing Services. When you get down to the, the amount of money that's actually available for teachers and students to have materials they need, it's a very small percent, like 3% of the whole budget, very, very little, and it's one of the only things you can change when you're cutting the budget. You can't not have teachers for children, you can't not have electives, we require them to be graduated. School transportation is a law, you can look at different ways to provide it, so there's this tiny amount of money in the budget, and when we cut back, or when we freeze, which I'm really personally opposed to, that's the only money that enriches our program and makes sure students have texts and materials and teachers have what they need. Otherwise, what are we doing? So I want to say that I hope the budget isn't cut back in these areas. That's why we replenished some text money. There's such a small amount of discretionary money in a budget, even though it's a multimillion-dollar budget. Most of it is obligatory requirements, and then you have this small amount of discretionary money that actually reaches our students. I don't want us to cut reading services, and I don't want us to cut materials, and I don't want us to freeze those. But that's what will happen if we don't have a budget that allows for those materials. So I wanted to say that, and I wanted to mention that the Budget Subcommittee spent a lot of time talking about contractual obligations, which really interests me. And what that is, is that how much money in our, in all the contracts we have, we have to spend next year as an increase if we don't add any new positions, and it's several hundred thousand dollars. So I want to say, I think the Budget Committee and the amount of time it had really looked at intractable, we, we have no, no option to not meet our contractual obligations, and we can't We have no, no option to not meet our contractual obligations, and we can't continue to strip out materials that our children need. And we also have a policy on library materials. It says that library materials enrich and support the curriculum. I'll bet it's a decade since we've put ten thousand dollars in our libraries, and, I mean, since I went to school, the number of planets has changed, everything has changed, the countries in the world have changed. We have to get updated, how we look at families. We just can't have all elementary library books with white families with a mother and father, very traditional. We must get some updated library books, and we, my druthers would be to put something in the budget, or something in a grant, or somewhere to update our resource materials that children are reading every day so they're current, and we have a policy that says we have to do that. And so, I, I hope we are not cutting this budget, because I think it has just a small amount, really, for the students and teachers, and we need to keep that. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Hollins. And just to clarify, am I hearing a motion from you related to library services or materials? I'm hearing a suggestion, but it's not-
I'm reluctant to do that at this meeting because our committee, you know, didn't recommend it as a committee, but it's probably a fact that we haven't supplemented with quality resource materials for the elementary libraries in a long time. And I think we have to do that regularly to make sure our resource materials are there for the subjects we teach, and the literature doesn't have outdated role models.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I think the best thing to do is to request a little clarification from the superintendent related to how frequently the library materials are updated, just to be sure. I don't want to spread anything that may not be true. If you have information now related to the library, that would be great. If not, I think that we can come back with it. This is obviously an important topic, and as Member Hollins mentioned, and as was reported in the recorder recently, there was some pretty extensive deliberation about our library services at our schools.
This comment is actually not about libraries in particular, but I want to support the comment that when there are cuts to our budget, it disproportionately affects the amount that teachers and principals have discretionary control over. So much of our budget is fixed costs. We've talked at length about the over three hundred thousand dollars, that's an increase in contractual obligations, because we have collective bargaining agreements that have made promises by which we can keep good people here. We've also had hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost passed on to us by agencies in this community that are not within the control of anyone here in this room. What that means is when we absorb fixed cost increases on such a large scale, absolutely instructional supplies are hurt. Absolutely, teachers are reaching into their pockets to purchase supplies. Absolutely, principals are recommending increases and updates to curriculum materials, science kits, library materials, hands-on supplies, the things that children notice, the things that make a lesson, the difference between a great lesson and one where children are tuned out and tired. Absolutely, those are the things that go. So, we make hard decisions, and we sit here and have conversations about the big-ticket items, but I absolutely would like to advocate for supply lines that let teachers and principals put in the hands of children the materials that they need, and that is always the first to go.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a line in the budget for contracted library services for twenty-five thousand? Is that still here? I think it is. We have a, I'm on page six-three-one. It's under system-wide administrative costs. I think the history of this number was, the history of this item might be to have a consultant come in to help us make library book selections. But could we take fifteen thousand from this line on library consulting and direct it to updating elementary libraries?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Can you repeat your motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we take fifteen thousand from the library consult, contracted consulting, and move it to a line for updating elementary libraries. That would be five thousand for each library. Resources.
And that would be, just to clarify, creating three new lines at each elementary school, or?
Well, I wouldn't do that. I, I think I'd leave it under curriculum as just elementary library resources.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that? Member Karen, second? Any deliberation?
I just have a question, I guess. Have we been using the library consulting? Like, is that something that happened yearly? Is that just sent in there? I'm not sure what that entails.
I think Member Hollins is correct about the intent of it. It has been used for different kinds of library services from time to time. We try to keep with the intent of the line and the purpose as it's coded, but we don't always have a need for library consulting, so I think this better fits the need for that line.
Member Hollins, did you also have a comment?
I was going to say that should we need more library consulting during the year, we can maybe look at that later in the year.
Thank you. So, there's a motion on the table to take fifteen thousand dollars from the contracted library consulting services to give five thousand dollars to each elementary, for updating of each elementary library. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous? And I believe that means that we are left with ten thousand dollars in that line? Okay. Mayor Martin?
There's a projection above one hundred new students. Could the superintendent explain how that projection was made and what the cost of a hundred new students might add to the budget?
The registrar was here at our last public meeting and hearing and spoke about that projection process. It is early in the year, so it is not an exact science at this point in time, but we do have an obligation as the committee at this point in time has to vote the budget by charter to plan for students that we reasonably expect to be here. We start with all the students that are here, and if they were to stay, and we roll them up to the next year, and we look at class size for each grade and what that might take for the next year. Sometimes grade level or sections change. For example, when they're going from the middle school to eighth grade, which is here in the high school, and we have to look at specific sections for each subject, and sometimes that necessitates adding a teacher, even with the same number of children. Other times, we can accommodate it. We then look at our incoming class, for example, our incoming kindergarten. This year, we had our kindergarten registration just last week, I think it was, and we had a tremendous turnout at our kindergarten registration and screening night already. Because we've started this process earlier, we're now actually screening our kindergarteners now, so we can get a sense of how they're doing and what, where we might best place them for the fall, which is very exciting, and we already have families that have committed to the district for the fall. So, we know now a bit about our incoming class, but we still have a high number of families that move in between now and the first day of school in the fall. So, there's a certain amount of students that we expect based on past trends every year and sort of the historical enrollment, and we project that number moving forward typically. The numbers that we use this year, we just rolled up existing children. We didn't add a certain amount just by guesstimate. But there are some students in here who may still make other choices regarding the tech school or things like that. So, there are probably some students that might make a different choice, but there might, are a number of students who will also come here that are not yet reflected. So, this is our best projection as of right now, and that means that our enrollment is increasing based on our current projections. And we have done our best to address new enrollment without adding all of the new positions that we would have really liked. We've talked at length about wanting to add a new fifth grade position, but the middle school principal was looking at existing people and trying to accommodate an enrollment increase with the same number of staff. So, we're making those tough decisions wherever we can, as opposed to just adding people, and that's a little bit about the enrollment you have here.
Thank you. At, for a hundred students, if we had fifteen in the class and we used the standard rule of thumb of a hundred thousand dollars per class, would, would that interpret to six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars with a hundred students?
Maybe our business manager wants to follow along. It feels like, are you smarter than a fourth grader? If we had our blackboard out, we could follow your arithmetic and try to keep up with you. The problem is that they're not all in one classroom, and they're not all sitting in a vacant room with, we just had one teacher. So, in many cases, there's an empty seat, we add a student, we already have the teacher, that's an easy one. In some cases, adding that new student puts us over a class size, or puts it into an environment that's not ideal, and we have to add another teacher, even if there's a small number of students in some sections, so you just, you can't get all the students in. In other places, we've made a commitment to making sure that students really have contact with their teacher and aren't just sitting in a big lecture hall, they're actually having hands-on learning. So, we look at class size projections, and you've gotten those in the past, too. And all the principals that are here tonight have been involved in those discussions. So, they might say, you know, I'll, I'll, instead of adding a new teacher, I'll add a support teacher, or, they've had those discussions. It's a bit of a trading game, if you will, so that they can make the recommendations that they feel are best for their building and most appropriate.
Thank you.
Can I, is that, does that answer your question? Because I feel that my interpretation of your question was not exactly, are you suggesting that an additional hundred thousand, I'm sorry, an additional hundred students, in order to educate an additional hundred students, you estimate the cost to educating those hundred students at six-hundred-and-eighty?
Well, if we added the six and a half classrooms, it would be around six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. The, I think the superintendent answered that, they're not all in one classroom, and I think that spreads out the cost, but it may, it may bump one classroom or grade to another, another need for a classroom. So, that's, I guess, yet to be determined. And when the school committee votes on the choice in seats available in May, that's something that should be considered, because our budget will already have been passed. On the consultants, there are a number of line items where consultants are used. What is the total cost for this year?
I would have to calculate that. There's a lot of consulting lines. If you want, I can do that.
Okay.
For this year, or budgeted for FY nineteen?
FY nineteen currently, and we have a number of consultants. I just wanted to review that. I have, I have the year-to-date expenses for the school department through March first, and so that breaks down to eight months and four months. So, eight months that are year-to-date expended and four months that aren't. Although there are many, many, many line items where it works out pretty perfectly, if you have ten dollars for the eight months, there's five dollars left, and that's, that's your perfect budget projection. But there are some that I, I can't explain, and maybe you can help me. Four corners teaching staff for eight months is four-hundred-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and for the next four months, it's three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Why would there be, I can think you know my question. So, for a four-corner sped paraprofessional, it's a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred dollars for eight months, and a hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-four-hundred dollars for four months. In, in the Greenfield High School teaching staff, it's five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars for eight months, and it's five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars for four months. So, it's these encumbered amounts that, that don't add up to one-third, and sometimes they add up to two-thirds. The integrated arts is a number that, it's a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for eight months, and a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand for four months. So, my point is, how, how do you reconcile those, those encumbrances on the line items?
Well, a lot of things happen with salaries during the course of the year. You know, there's people who get moved from school to school or class to class. There's higher, oh, is this not, there's hirings and, and people leave. So, you get through a point in time where your salary numbers can get off from the original projection, because it wasn't the original people. Either you have staff changes, or you have staff movements. So, what we do in our version of the budget is, we have folks totaled up for where we should be at this point, and we'll go and we'll make adjustments to the salary line saying, well, you know, we probably had the start of this budget when it was voted last May, we had eight paraprofessionals in this line, but as things shook out and IEPs or what have you, we actually only have five paras here, and we have three in another budget. So, we just need to make some budget transfers between the, the lines that, that were funded, but then the actual results of somebody's employment occur in another line.
I see, I see where the first, the first eight months, we spent about nine-point-six-million dollars, and we have encumbered seven-point-four-million dollars for the next four months. So, as it, as these type of anomalies build upon themselves, it ends up with the, as I just said, nine-point-six and seven-point-four. So, we're spending almost as, in four months, what we were spending, what we spent in eight months because of the encumbrances. So, and even with that, we show us, we show a bottom line, unspent funds of five-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars.
Well, the other thing, too, is if you have folks who are paid summer salaries, even though we're this, this far along into the school year, pay-wise, you're only just a little bit past the point of January, February, when you're at the halfway point. So, we still have a lot of salaries that need to be paid, not just through June, but it pays folks through August, and that's money that needs to be encumbered and reserved. So, it kind of, when you look at it in just the terms of the months of the year, where you're on the school year, that's usually lagging where we are in salaries, because there's more salaries to be paid through the course of the year.
So, I do want to jump in, Mayor Martin. I really want to support this conversation in a full understanding of our current budget, but the agenda topic is the FY nineteen budget. Is there a way to loop this back around into?
This is the FY nineteen budget.
But you're looking at the Munis report that's up to date for this year's spending. Is that correct? And the others, committee members don't have that Munis report. I think the most recent Munis report that they have is from February. So, I, as I said, I want to support this conversation in a full understanding of our budget. Is there, how does, how is this connected to your thinking about FY nineteen?
Because we're building, we're discussing and building an FY nineteen budget. You really can't do that until you kind of look back and see what happened. So, you can't just guess at FY nineteen. So, the constant reference to what have we now, and what are we spending on, is very relevant to FY nineteen. I think that should answer your question.
Yes, I'm hearing you say that you're trying to get a feel for our FY eighteen actuals as best you can at this time in the school year in order to inform your vote on the FY nineteen budget. Is that right?
More or less, more or less. So, getting back to the summer, the summer tuition, the payments in the summer for FY nineteen, which will be July and August, is in the FY eighteen budget or in the FY nineteen budget?
It's probably FY eighteen budget for that year, because when somebody's salary is set for the year, it goes through the entire fiscal year, and then, even though the fiscal year's ended, usually depending on the municipality, that the money gets encumbered and is paid out of those lines, because that is FY eighteen money that was set aside to be paid in FY nineteen, because it's that person's total annual salary divided by, you know, fifty-two paid periods.
You're exactly right, and I agree with you a hundred percent. So, last year, we spent one-two, one-point-two million dollars in July and August out of the FY seventeen budget. So, you would have your one- So you would have your $1.2 million in the FY '18 encumbrances, which would bring it from 7.4 down to 6.2 million, which is still 2 million over what we spent in the previous four months. So the four-month encumbrance, that's 6 million, is more than the 4 million we spent in each four-month period of this year, this budget. I know budgets are complicated, but do you understand what I'm saying with a third, a third, a third?
I do. We'll take a look at that. We'll look at the specific lines and see how they played out, the ones that you mentioned, and we can have a conversation about that.
I do just want to make two comments. One is that you mentioned July and August, and I'm not sure if you're referencing out-of-district tuition prepay or if you're talking about supply lines. But a school year, it's not that children need the same thing every month of the year. So if you ask a teacher sitting out there tonight, most schools were putting in a supply order over the summer, hence the heavy spending in the summer months before students are in the classroom, trying to get all the supplies in place for them. And then mostly that expense is a one-time expense for the year. So when those run out, often at this point in the year, we've exhausted those supply lines. And so we don't continue to maybe purchase more crayons, purchase more paper, purchase those extra things, and instead a teacher might be funding those out of his or her own pocket. At this point in the year, why do we have over $500,000 available? Because, as Member Hollins was talking about earlier, we're currently in a freeze on spending. We're in a freeze right now as we sit here tonight because of the fact that we want to get a clear accounting of our current fiscal picture. And the principals will tell you that they have needs. There are principals sitting here tonight who have put in a requisition, who have said there's something that we need, and we've asked them to wait on purchasing that until we have a very clear sense of where we are this year and if we are going to be able to make those purchases. That means there are teachers that need those funds right now. There are children that need those supplies right now. And we're holding on those supplies in some cases. When there's a safety need, we purchase it immediately. But there are difficult decisions being made because we are not over-budgeted in any of these lines. And in fact, we could easily tell you the needs for any of these lines where we are under-budgeted in a number of areas. So we're making difficult decisions to manage the budget that the school committee votes. And sometimes we put a temporary hold in order to accomplish that. That's the only reason that there's a surplus. We should be 99% spent at this point in the year. And the salaries are encumbered from the beginning of the year. That's good budgeting. It just means that they're planned for. We know that they're coming. Otherwise, teachers would get to June or July and find that there wasn't remaining funds to pay their salary. And that's terrible. So what we do in advance is we encumber all of the salaries first thing. So they're always encumbered in advance. That's part of our budgeting.
Are there any other comments or questions on the budget? Yeah. Member Hollins?
I don't know if this is important, but we keep bringing up the fact that we are over 19 million. We are $3,955.06 over 19 million. If it's important that we not go over 19 million, I'd like to make a recommendation of how to reduce the budget by $3,955.07 so we're under 19 million. Is it important because it keeps coming up all the time that we're over 19 million?
My understanding is that no, it's not necessarily important. Mayor Martin, or Member Ward?
The Budget and Finance Subcommittee tasked the superintendent with coming up with the budget under $19,500,000 originally. So we're still well below that by half a million dollars. Bravo, Subcommittee.
And Mayor Martin, I know you have more questions. Would you like to have the floor now?
Yes. Thank you. On the advertisement that we had for the budget, notice of public hearing, just, I don't understand this. So I'd say, for instance, North Parish, for the 18-19 budget, it's $441,776. But the actual budget, total budget for North Parish is $753,530. That includes the offset and the increase in the local amount of $468,794. So is it customary to present a proposed budget that is just local and excludes the total project or the total line item for the department or the site?
Generally, yeah. The local budget is what's proposed and voted on because that's the portion that's paid for by the taxpayers in town. So the other funding sources are varied and private and public, but also under the control of the school committee versus the local voters. So generally, the budget that's voted is usually the local number because that's the number that the town eventually has to pay.
Okay, thank you. Could you explain charter school transportation for me? I know we're paying $40,000, I think it is, in the line item. I know that the charter school is part of the public school system in Greenfield, but what are expenses for the charter school besides transportation? We provide meals. Can you go through that?
I'd have to research that. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Percentage of food service that we provide the charter schools and what percentage of our transportation? I think, do we have a separate line item for the charter school transportation? Anyone found that?
Page 831.
Yeah.
831?
Yeah.
Yes, 831. And there is a line. It's at the bottom, like one-third of the page, charter school transportation.
It's $40,000 budgeted and there was $37,266 expended last year, but I'd have to pull the detail to see what are we actually paying for, for that transportation.
Looking forward to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a comment, not about the amounts in the budget, but the format. I have two comments. One, we have a line item called truant officer. And it's on page 631. In fact, we're obligated to assign someone to be a truant officer. I don't think we have. And there's $30,000 budgeted here, but it's not for the school truant officer, it's for the school resource officer. And if you look at the budget, you would not find a resource officer because we've got the money under truant officer. So I think that's another line that we need to create, to have a school resource officer line item and then to put the $30,000 there and not under truant officer. Because we have nothing.
Superintendent, did you want to respond?
I would agree with that. It would be technically correct to list this as the school resource officer. We are required to have a truant officer. It would help us greatly to have a truant officer. I'm looking forward to hearing details about the proposal to add school resource officers if we were to have additional support in the form of additional officers for our schools. I think we could easily meet this mandate as one of the first things. Making sure that students are able to get to school is one of the very basic ways that we can use police presence to help collaborate with the community, to support children who need that extra checkup. And it is a requirement. I think this would be a great place to look at that possibility.
Thank you, Superintendent. And for those that aren't aware, the mayor did put forward a request to our police chief to put together a proposal related to increasing the police presence at the schools. The last I checked, a couple weeks ago, the proposal wasn't 100% ready. But I just want to clarify for school committee members and the public that that would absolutely have to come to the school committee table for deliberation. Also, Mayor Martin has indicated that any funding for that would not be coming out of the school committee budget. To go back to Member Hollins' comment, would you like to put forward a motion?
I'll make a motion that we create a new line item under system-wide administrative costs titled school resource officer. And the $30,000 we have budgeted for truant officer go in that line.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any, would you like to speak to your motion or any questions? Member Alexander, I think you have a question.
Okay, the difference between a truant officer and the current resource officer, are these two different positions or are they the same?
They're different under the law. And we don't necessarily have to have a truant officer person. We have to assign who's going to be the truant officer. We could assign all the social workers to be truant officers. But the school resource officer is a provision of law and it's for a police officer. And who we want to be truant officer is different. It's a different law.
Okay, then where in the budget is the school resource officer coming from or do we pay for the school resource officer at this time?
So this is what Member Hollins is putting forward to clarify this because right now the funding for our school resource officer or our portion of the salary of the school resource officer that is shared with our police department is in the truant officer line. So that is on page 631. It's the second line item. It says truant officer. And there is $30,600 budgeted for FY '19 local budget.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, 631, the second line item. It's labeled truant officer. What Member Hollins has moved is to add a line called school resource officer and put the funding in the school resource officer line because there's a difference between a truant officer and a school resource officer. Yes, Member Ward? Yes?
Costs enter system-wide administration costs.
What page?
631.
631. The second line on the page says truant officer. We could add some money for a truant officer because truly, if you want achievement to go up, the greatest factor is time on task ever researched. And if people aren't in school, they're not getting an education and it shows up in their test results. So you have children with chronic attendants and we don't have people that can go out and knock on doors.
No, go ahead.
I've been in other systems where in fact we had a social worker who was assigned a portion of time to be the truant officer and went around and principals told the person who had chronic absenteeism and they went to the homes and talked to parents, what's going on. But it's actually a pretty important need. Doesn't have to be someone new, but it needs to be an assignment and it can, some schools make all the principals, I think.
Thank you, Member Hollins.
But they can't leave the schools, really.
Thank you, Member Hollins. The Superintendent has a comment and then Member Ward. Is that okay if the Superintendent responds first?
I think this is a really good conversation. I think there's a need for increased support around truancy, but I would recommend that we not have this conversation until we've reviewed the proposal for increased police support so that we have a full understanding of what the staffing and resources might be before we zero out any particular line and move it. And we have the full benefit of advice from the chief and recommendations for safety and the best use of staff and their particular training as it's best suited for school resource officer, SRO work or truant work.
Superintendent, just to clarify, I'm hearing two different things. A recommendation to add on a school resource officer line and transfer the funding and also keep the truant officer in support for having some funding for truant officer line. However, I'm also hearing you recommend that we don't make any changes yet until we have further deliberation on school resource officers. Can you clarify your recommendation for the motion that's on the table and any other subsequent motions related to funding the line of a truant officer?
I recommend that you either take from the table this current motion until we've had an opportunity to review the increased school resource officer proposal or in the alternative that you add funding for a truant officer if you're going to move this funding to a school resource officer line.
Okay, one minute, Mayor Martin. Member Ward had a comment and then Mayor Martin has some comments related to school resource officers. Member Ward?
Could I just clarify my motion? Because all I've done in my motion...
Hold on just a second. Hold on just a second.
Page 11. Under school resource officer?
1131.
Yes, sir.
In the personnel report. Is there a question?
What's that $30,000 for?
So that $30,000 is, so this is the personnel report and that's the half, I believe it's half, of the salary for the school resource officer. We share that cost with the police department. And that $30,600 that's indicated in the FY '19 salary column is what is currently being listed on page 631 as the truant officer salary. So there's just a discrepancy of the labeling there, but then there's conversation about the need to have both positions. And yes, Member Hollins?
I just want to say my motion was just to put a new line in the budget called school resource officer and the money for the school resource officer be in that line.
Thank you. Mayor Martin, did you want to comment on this?
Member Ward mentioned the fact that we already have a, seems like a line item named school resource officer. So one of those lines can be eliminated. They're both for the same amount of money. One's a truant officer, one's school resource officer.
Member Hollins?
We only have a school resource officer. We don't have a line to put the school resource officer. So it's put under truant officer, which is a different type of position, and we don't have any money budgeted for truant officer. It's just a confusion, which is why I recommended we clear it up.
I agree with the confusion.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table and Member, Susan Farber, would you like to read the motion back to us?
We created a new line item under school resource officer under system-wide administration officer and $30,000. So we'll push it back.
Is everyone clear?
The $30,000 listed under truant officer go in that line because it's listed there, but it's for the school resource officer.
And while we're getting specific, I would offer the friendly amendment to actually reflect $30,600, please. Do you accept that?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Ward?
So the plan for this new $30,600 to be listed under school resource officer will be to add to?
It's the same amount of money, just putting it in the right line.
Putting it in the right line and?
No new money, no change in the budget.
No new position.
Just fixing.
But aren't we only responsible for the $30,600 in that salary?
Yes.
We're going to get rid of the $30,600.
No, we're not getting rid of anything.
All right. Let's just, I'm fine not understanding.
Well, Member Ward, so just one more time. I think it's really actually good for us all to understand. Right now, there's a line for truant officer. The money that's been placed into that line is actually going to the school resource officer salary. So rather than have it listed as truant officer, the recommendation is to add a line called school resource officer and move that money to that new line. That would leave the truant officer without any money allocated for it. That doesn't mean that later on down the line, there couldn't be a transfer of money into that line item. So the motion right now, does that make sense? now, does that make sense? So it's not an addition of additional money into the budget, it's just moving it to a new line item to better reflect how we're using that money.
It's listed twice, but we're counting it once.
It's actually listed only once in our budget, in the actual budget. What you saw, which is accurate information, is the personnel report that's attached to the back end of the budget, to clarify any positions that these budget numbers are actually funding. So it's... Member Alexander?
Okay, just to make sure I'm following along, because I had to do a little bit of reading here to make sure. So we're going to leave the line truant officer on the budget, but it's going to be zero, we're going to put the school resource officer on the budget and reflect the accurate amount, that's thirty thousand six hundred.
Yes, that's the motion that's on the table right now.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Is there any further deliberation on this? Mayor, did you want to elaborate, or?
Well, I guess I can explain, the proposal that the police chief has come up with regarding the school resource officer is that due to the design of our school system in Greenfield, scattered sites, and the need to project safety and security as number one in all instances, we have agreed to incorporate into the police budget two SROs, two student resource officers, that would be roving and unsubscribed to a specific site, but be able to be at all the sites. In addition, that will not cost the school department any money, it will cost the town of Greenfield additional funds, and that has been outlined at be somewhere around a hundred and, hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The current thirty thousand takes care of about forty percent of the cost of a student resource officer, and we think that the addition of two SROs for the school department and the scattered sites will also be not only a benefit and boost the safety and security, but be available for evening events when there are large groups of students together, as well as to put together summertime, summertime guidance and monitoring at different parks, playgrounds, and so on. So that's going to be totally up to the town council when we approach that juncture in the budget process.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. And again, any modification to our use or our school resource officers would need to come through the school committee for deliberation, so we will look forward to more details on that. Is everyone clear on the motion on the table? Is everyone prepared to vote? Okay. All those in favor of creating a new line for the school resource officer, moving the thirty thousand six hundred dollars from the current truant officer line to the school resource officer line, and keeping the truant officer line in the budget but set at zero, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is unanimous, Susan, thank you. Okay. Are there any further questions or comments about the budget? I'm getting the wrap it up signal from Member Ward. Okay, I'll just speak for myself, as an individual, I, I've served on the committee for a few years now, and year after year, and I believe last year I said the exact same thing. I'm going to support this budget. I think that every year, we're getting better at reflecting, presenting a more clear and transparent budget. I think that there's work to be done on that, I think there's a little work to be done on our budget process. I really appreciate all of the time and effort and the real sense of responsibility that I get from committee members in a desire to understand what it is that we're putting forward and overseeing. I also appreciate community input, and knowing that there are folks out there really, you know, poring through our budget and looking at what we're spending money on. As Member Hollins noted, this is a policy document, and this is representative of our values to the best of our ability here in Greenfield within the constraints that we have. Again, every year, I say, this is just not enough, it's just not enough money. That's my position. I feel that ultimately, I would like to see Greenfield in a position to be able to be spending a little bit more on our education here. I do think that this is a responsible budget that we're putting forward, and I do feel that I will support this budget, and I will look for opportunities to advocate for more funding for our schools at the state level, at the federal level, and just locally here in our community. So is there a motion at this time to support the FY nineteen budget? Let's go ahead and attach a number to that, to be specific. My understanding is that we haven't added anything this evening, is that correct? Right. So to clarify, the motion would be to support an all-funds budget of twenty-two-
It's a local budget that we vote, isn't it?
Yes, thank you. To support the FY nineteen local budget of nineteen million dollars, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and six cents. And that was moved by Member Ward. Is there a second? Second by Member Alexander. Is there any further deliberation on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mayor Martin? Mayor Martin abstains. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, so, moving on to our next agenda item, and then following that agenda item, we do have a brief executive session, hopefully brief, I'm saying, suggesting. Sure. Okay, so our last agenda item is upcoming agenda requests. So this is an opportunity for anyone to weigh in on any requests related to agenda items, to weigh in in the public about it. I have been reviewing agenda requests that have come forward with this particular group, and also requests that have come forward with a previous group, requests for certain kinds of reporting, et cetera. My intention is to review the school committee calendar that was put together last year as a result of our workshop together, that Secretary Alexander continues to populate this calendar and help to keep us all on course. My understanding is that he was really diving into utilizing that calendar last year to help support Mayor Martin in his role as chair of the school committee, and that has continued. So my intention is to look at some of the bigger-picture items and see where it falls logically into the calendar, and ensure that the Superintendent has the ability to provide the information that we're looking for, so that will be coming forward very soon. But I also did commit to adding this as an agenda item at our meetings, so you'll see this regularly at our agenda, our regular meetings, that if there are any upcoming agenda requests, there will be an opportunity to weigh in in public about it. And just to reiterate what I've said before and via email, that it is okay to send agenda requests to me as a chair, or call me up and ask, whatever. So I'll yield the floor to any members at this time if there are any requests that members would like to put forward formally. Member Hollins?
I have a few items, I'm not sure if they're agenda or study items, but I'd like us to clarify what time limit we are referring to when we talk about past practice. Just how far do we want to look when we want to see what's been done in Greenfield before, that would be helpful, so we all know what the reference is. It's also on my mind that we review unfinished work from FY seventeen. We get in the middle of things, I go over the minutes, it'll say, let's pass this, and I think at some point, we should look at the things we've passed or we haven't finished and know what they are. At some point, I would be interested, I don't know if anyone else is, to look at possible revenue streams that might be beneficial to the district. On my mind in particular is adult education, which we have a revolving, revolving fund for. We certainly have a lot of very talented staff in our district that could give programs, or we could talk about sponsoring programs. I don't know if this is an agenda topic, but I would be interested in looking at models for central office staffing. I understand that we only appoint a couple of positions, but how we staff and budget the central office, I think there's many ways to do it, and we have some positions open, it seems like a good time to look at models. And lastly, I would be interested in our curriculum planning policies, getting ready to talk about a curriculum person, and we have policies on how we develop curriculum and how we review curriculum and how we budget for curriculum, and I think it would be good to do that.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Do any other members have any input at this time? Member Alexander?
So this is like Christmas, we're asking what we want for Christmas, right? Well, the one document that I'm really proud that we were able to knock out last year was the internal goals for this sub, for this committee, and two things I'd like to put on for discussion is, one is hosting possibly a public meeting, or more events where we're talking with parents and families as a committee, and the other is talking and discussing more, investigating ways to connect with local and public groups here in town to build stronger collaboration. So those could be discussions that I think would be well worth our time and effort.
Thank you, Member Alexander. Any other input at this time? Mayor Martin?
Yes, I'd like to revisit, revisit the curriculum issue about civics and local history. I do, I admit, I mention this every year in half the last five. I'd like to see a course designed, if not, we can't do it, then we can go online, there are several online for schools across the United States to attach to and utilize, utilize the civic educational process. I'd also like the school committee to be aware of a potential ordinance proposed by Counselor Mayo, which prevents consultants and outsourcing. I think the school committee should read it, understand it, and make a recommendation, or offer an opinion on that ordinance. The mayor is not in favor of it for a number of reasons. It certainly impacts a number of different areas of the town, and the school department is one. So I would present the copy of that to the Superintendent for inclusion in the next packet at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any, anything else? Okay, thank you. Member Ward, did you have anything that you wanted to add, or requests for agenda items? Okay. So seeing no further comment, yes, Member Hollins?
I would just like to support the topics raised by Mayor Martin and Member Alexander, and I've heard the chair mention several times, looking at issues of social justice and civic involvement, and if you propose that, I'd support that too.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Okay, seeing no further comments, at this time, we will enter into executive session. We do need a roll call, a motion and roll call to enter in. Is there a motion to enter into executive session for MGLC thirty-eight, twenty-one, two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel?
So move.
Second from Member Hollins. Roll call, please.
Committee Member Hollins. Committee Member Karen. Committee Member Ward. Committee Member Nunes.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And my vote is yes as well.
Thank you. We have now entered into executive session, and we will return only to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at four hundred Main Street in Greenfield, call them at seven seven four three one nine one, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at seven seven two zero eight three eight, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since nineteen seventy-two. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at four one three four two two one one four three. Peoples United Bank, located at forty-five Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at seven seven four three seven one three, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at twenty-three Fisk Ave, call them at four one three seven seven two three one two two, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.